This is the town meeting, a town council meeting, February 20th, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Harvey Hearing Room. This is being recorded by WCAT. It can be live and it can be taped. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Mr. Bancori, would you please ...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting on 2/14 of February, 14th of February at the Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Please call the robe.
Councilor Inghman here. Councilor Callahan, present. Councilor Christopher. Councilor Thierry.
Here.
Councilor Soto.
Here.
Councilor McDuffie.
Here.
Councilor Conti.
Present.
Vice President Bancori.
Here.
President Beckham.
Here. I would like to take a motion to accept the minutes of February 6th, the town council meeting. Bring your motion.
Yes.
Epstein. Bring your motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two extensions.
Three.
You have them?
Yes.
Okay. We, originally, we had a Verizon petition, which has been withdrawn for a public hearing. Don't have that to see you. But we, our second public hearing is for town council to appropriate 1,931,500 for the purpose of financing reconstruction of the town's center. I'll open that hearing with an overview by the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I've delivered tonight any copy of my report to each counselor. I'll make sure it gets up on the website. My secretary's out until next Monday, so we'll get it up as soon as we can following this meeting. But the report focuses on the Center Business District project, infrastructure project, which included the water and sewer, drainage, unification to sidewalk streets, parking lots, and the like, as well as a complete streets approach to make it more accessible to all of our citizens. At the onset of this, I think the question that I'd first like to address is the second part of my report first, which is how did this become a $12.5 million project from an $8.5 million project? And after meeting with the project team on numerous occasions, the project team has advised me that they've always said it was a $10.5 million project without administrative costs, police details, or landscaping. Those additional costs are projected to bring us up to $12 million. The .5 comes from removing the utilities from poles and putting them on the ground, making this a $12.5 million project. If you look at the report that was published on our website in July, first week of August, in expansion of the $8.5 million project not being sufficiently funded, and also the administration costs, police details, and other expenses were not included in that $8.5 million figure. So I just want to point out the consistency between the two reports, what the real numbers for the infrastructure projects currently are. Do the best estimates that we have getting from Woodward and Curran. I've asked Dick Kingston, along with Michael Perez, Joe Tom Louritz, my intern Ashman Howard to go over this information, research it well, and deliver the best report to be as transparent as possible to the public. At the first start off, we'd like to always say, I was trying to push this to be a 75-25% project, 25% on the general fund, 75% on the water and sewer enterprise fund. After a lot of debate in my office through the parties that were involved and checking with legal counsel, drainage could not be charged off to water and sewer. Drainage is about a $3 million charge-off that had to been, then had to be reallocated to the general fund to increase the general fund numbers to $5,105, and then the enterprise account to $3,874 to have the even divide between the two accounts. So the borrowing, that $5 million is the borrowing. Certainly, that would, we would have to borrow to make this project work. That doesn't include the grants that we have taken in that would make up the difference of the remainder of the project. So that borrowing on the general fund side certainly is projected to be about $323,000 per year on the general fund side. There's no way our general fund can suffice that type of charge-off. That would significantly cut each department across the board, which we never recommend. And certainly, the only way to fund this project from the general fund perspective is to, to ask for a debt exclusion. That's my recommendation at the end of my report, is to ask for debt exclusion for this project so we don't have to cut departments and squeeze down their budgets to inoperable levels. We've had to do that before in 2008 and 2009, and certainly a difficult process. The problem here is that we have a chicken and egg situation that without the infrastructure project, we can't get any new growth. And without new growth, we can't do other projects or move the town forward because of the 2.5%. We see our constant projections going up for each department to about 3% per year, meaning we're .5% underwater already, just on the 2.5% of each year that we can go up. So that's a significant problem for us. On the water and sewer side of things, it certainly, based on the projections, their debt obligation will be about the same. And you say, how can you do that for the 65-35 split? The loans for the MWRA are 10 years, and the loans on the general government side are 30 years. So we have to pay back our loans quicker through MWRA loans. There's 0% interest, which makes them very attractive, but there are also a 10-year limitation. You can't get extensions on those. You have to pay back all your principal in a, there's certainly some interest involved in some of these loans that would have to all be paid back in 10 years. So the water and sewer rate would still have to go up. To do this project, the water and sewer rate would have to be increased 66 cents. After, we also have a deficit currently projected in the water and sewer budget to a tune of about $400,000. So we have a projected deficit already to, in order to bring us level funding, we would have to come before council and ask for a source stabilization to be reallocated of $300,000, and then also raise the rate to the ratepayer between $2 and $2.25 just to make us whole next year. You might be asking, well, what happened to our reserves? And why don't we have our reserves that we can rely on in the water and sewer? Certainly on page two, what is numbered page two in my report, you see where the water and sewer retained earnings have been used over the last two years, and our water and sewer reserves have been spent down on those current projects at that time. So we certainly don't have any reserves that we can attack from. We have currently, I think Mike said, $46,000, Mike?
Yeah.
As of July 1st this year, or last year, in the reserve account for the water and sewer. So that's a very small reserve that we have left. The more troubling aspect of this situation is all of our borrowing will be, from MWRA will be exhausted until 2030, meaning that if there's an emergency or any other projects that have to be completed, we would not be able to go to MWRA for borrowing, which means that we'd have to go with general bond borrowing, which is higher on the interest rate, and certainly would cost more to the ratepayer. We did do a rate comparison, and we used communities based on average water usage to compare to our water usage, and certainly, we looked at their long-term borrowing compared to our long-term borrowing. So that certainly seems to be, we're much lower, but we're also, we have much lower tolerance to increasing rates and increasing taxes. So that has to also be taken into consideration as we move forward. The other issues that you have to grapple with is our secured funding, and the sources that we've already secured funding from would have to be notified that if we didn't do this project, which would significantly hamper future collaborations with our state representatives. They've, all have stuck their neck out for our loans and our grants, and certainly at the request of the administration care on a local level. So those are all things that we have to consider. If we put this project off, we lose the 2.38 million. The SRF might be able to be saved over a two-year period, but certainly we'd lose it if we extended it any longer than two years. That would complete my initial comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions directed by the council or the public.
I'll open it up to the councils. Any comments, questions?
Mr. President, I have a question. How did you, why did you choose those three towns as comparisons?
Water usage.
Similar water usage.
Yeah.
By average, by household average.
Single home average.
Not, not aggregate.
Could I ask if somebody can close, shut that off, whatever it is that's ringing?
I think I can do it.
I think it was a phone, not the condition.
No, it's not that. I think it's calling. Continue, please.
Any other questions, council?
And we'd be, we'd just be happy if anyone wanted to pick any community, we'll do the same analysis. We're not trying not to hide anything, so whatever the community anyone wants to pick and vote it to us from the council's level, we'll certainly research and have an updated report.
Michael?
I was just curious if this same sort of analysis was done the first time, because this is actually coming back to us for further appropriation. So was this done the first time, when the previous council?
I was not part of that process. As police chief, we normally don't pay attention to these things at the council level. We're glad we're not being called on. But certainly, you know, I don't know.
I'll open it up to public comments. Yes, sir. Jared?
Thank you, President John Matagiano, appreciate. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this civilian project tonight. I've read the overall description from Chief. I think most of this project, as I understand it, is dedicated to very much needed underground water sewer work. That's been in the planning stages for a long time. I agree with you that it's really required by the town as an investment to attract and enhance the capability of the town to bring in new business and so forth. And not only that, to correct certain obvious deficiencies in the current water dissection system that we've noticed during the past year with respect to high tide, excessive rainfall, and so forth. So that, to me, looks like it's a very worthwhile investment. My concerns, though, have to do with the portion of the project that has to do with the so-called above-ground work, the beautification, if you will, the parking situation, if there are any additional parking spaces that are associated with this project, or are there any existing parking spaces that are programmed to be eliminated as a result of this project? And what exactly is the beautification part of it, Chief, that you mentioned earlier? And also, what is the proportion of the, of the, about groundwork, the beautification and the piping and so forth, cost-wise, as a, as a percentage of the overall cost of this? And is it, is it possible to perhaps think about splitting out the non below-ground water sewer work because of the sensitivity, as we learned over the past year, of the above-ground work, the beautification and the parking issue? So that's basically my comments, sir.
Certainly, the unallocated resources, Dick, was about $5 million?
$4,660,000.
$4,660,000. That, that fund was unallocated, so we couldn't put it to the water and sewer fund. So that's a lot of the beautification and sidewalk work. When you do a water and sewer project, we're only allowed to charge off the panels that we remove for that water and sewer line. So all the sidewalks that don't have that pipes underneath it would have to be charged back to the general fund. So there's a significant amount of that, and, you know, I think, and to be fair, that during the public meetings, we sold them a project.
Right.
And to now take it apart and dice it up, I think it would be very critical, people would be very critical of me and also of the council, to say, you didn't deliver on your promise.
Right.
This is about transparency and letting people know what is needed, and certainly where that money should be coming from, and allocating it into the right pocket, because ultimately, it's the taxpayer with the water and sewer on the right and general fund on the left.
Right.
It's coming from the taxpayer. So I hope I answered your questions the best I can at this point, to get a very specific number on landscape and that stuff, which I can't give you that right now.
Thank you for that, Chief. I'm not so much interested in the specific details of the cost breakout, and I appreciate your, your description. I'm much more interested, I guess, though, in the specifics of the above-ground work included in the proposal. I know the Councilor Christopher has had two very good public meetings over the past couple of months. I was not able to attend either one of them myself, which I regret, but it can't be more than five places at once. But I commend Councilor Christopher, even setting up those meetings on this very important, you know, concept. I mean, can you just tell us exactly what is included for the so-called above-ground work with respect to parking issues and landscaping, exactly where those elements are going to be?
Sure. At the beginning of the center on Woodside Avenue and Pauline Street.
Right.
And there'd be a beautification effort there on both sides of the street. All your sidewalks, unless you didn't have pipes under them, would be existing old sidewalks.
Sure.
So we're talking about probably one to two panels per service, right, Steve? So it depends on how many services, but you're not talking about a lot of sidewalk work under the water and sewer side. You're talking about a significant amount, whether we need to put new curbing in or use the old existing curbing, that's, that's a cost. The granite seating areas, and the expansion of French Square, that's all part of the cosmetics of the project. There's the redesign of the parking lot on Hagman Road, which certainly could be safer and should be safer. So I don't know, I wouldn't classify that as cosmetics.
I agree.
But I think overall, the plan that was accepted and adopted is on the plans and projects under the town website, the final design wise. I think, you know, you're going to lose some spots, but you're not losing the 35 or 37 that was initially thought that you were going to lose.
And with respect to French Square, are there any, for example, trees within, are there any of the existing trees or landscaping or shrubbery and so forth in French Square? Is that planned to be, is that our plan to be reglued as a part of it?
I would have to go back and look at the project. I don't know if Steve knows that. I can tell you right now, you know, we do the best we can on a daily basis, but it's not a beautiful French care. We have an existing older tree, and we have the shrubberies that I think volunteers actually maintain and keep up.
Yeah.
So the, the whole design there would change with the granite wall in the background with the runoff, as we talked about at these public meetings, John, with the landscape architect, and the seating area to expand to have a shaped seating where people could take their food and something to eat outside.
I think anything, by the way, thank you again for that, and I agree with you that anything can be improved. But with respect to French Square, we should all be aware that some of those plantings out there right now were planted with, for example, gifts from certain people, with the understanding that they would be permanently maintained by the town, and certain plaques, so.
The plaques, but I don't think the plantings were ever donated.
I think.
So I know the plaques, the railroad tie, and there was a, what was dedicated as a granite piece, a tiny granite piece.
Exactly.
So we're aware of those, and we would not disturb donated artifacts that were certainly in memory or something like that. Those would be maintained.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, but, well, thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to take up any more time than that. Thank you.
Anyone else who's to be heard? Yes.
I'd just like to get back to the financing part. I heard rate increase. Is that over a period of time? And the other thing, I heard debt exclusion.
Yes. Two, two things you don't want to hear.
I know.
I understand that.
I do.
I don't want to hear them as a, as a ratepayer or a taxpayer either, but certainly, I think we have to look at that. So between $2 and $2.25 would need to be adjusted immediately to take us out of deficit spending. So right now, that would cover the $400,000 deficit that we're currently projecting by the end of the year, and also cover increases for next fiscal year, with hopes that we have some reserves that we still can manage to separate out and put into a reserve account. The 66 cents beyond that would be just for the center project.
So right now, the current rate is $16.90, and now you're projecting $18.90 to $19.50, is that?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And then come on, the next phase would be the 1956 to 1981.
Right, that's the 66 cents.
So everything isn't going to happen all at once. It's going to be.
Why? You know, water rates are like grueling jello to the wall.
Right.
We have to make assumptions that we have the same usage we have currently next year, and then we raise the rate to cover our expenses for that year. But if the water usage goes down, I get to raise the rate even higher to keep it the same. So people, we raise the rate on people, they stop using their water, we have to raise it again on the people to get leveled back. So the water rates are based on projections, and I want everyone to understand that. It's not a scientific equation because the usage goes up and down so much on that.
And where does the debt exclusion fit into this?
The debt exclusion would fit into it on the general, general fund side, under the $5,100,000 that would still need a debt exclusion for, if the town authorized, you know, authorized that to be borrow that much money. Part of that is the SRF grant, which is about $4,900,000, which is the bulk of the borrowing there.
Any further comments? Yes.
Can I follow up with Terry, other?
Go ahead. Go, please.
Terry, I understand that the water rate's going to go up possibly to $3 more than we have. So everybody understands that's coming and knows that. The debt exclusion is another story, though. Have you figured out what it would cost per the average household? Would that debt exclusion of the 500, of the 5?
Yeah. Based on what we need is the $323,000 per year on, to pay back our loans, the rate would increase their taxes about $59.73. Michael, I'm looking at, might see a photo confirm that. Yes.
So the average house would go up $59.
And 73 cents.
And 73 cents, plus this $2.5 to $3.
Yes.
So it's about an extra $63 per house.
The water's a rate. So it pays off in a given fix, so.
Yeah. Counselor, sir?
Just a, just a couple of things. So originally, when this was proposed, it was an $8.5 million project, at least presented to the public that way. Correct? And we've heard various different things, that it was projected by the people actually to do the work to be 12, 12.5, or 10.5.
10.5 for the construction costs, not including administrative costs and police details.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's a pretty big thing to lay out there already two months in for a brand-new council and interim town manager to basically clean up this mess that we're already looking for a debt exclusion and raising water rates. And from what I understand of this, from the center project from the very beginning, the first time it was told us, it was a $4 million project, which we knew was ridiculous, right? And so, you know, we do still have a consultant, our former town manager, that is on the books and only reports to the town council president, but I just feel like Terry has worked so hard to clean up the mess that was left behind, and the public deserves a chance to ask these questions directly with the person who made these decisions. So, I mean, I, I would like to actually put a motion out there that town council president asks Mr. McCann to show up at our next meeting and address the public about this.
I'll second the motion.
You do that on your business, like on your business.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry about the technicality of it. I just think that it's inappropriate to have someone else defend somebody else's actions at this point, and they should be here to answer the public.
Just, you know, as long as people understand this is a necessity, we really need to get this, water pipes and this infrastructure fixed. It's been decrepit for years, it's getting worse and worse and worse. It needs to be done. We got $2.5 million from the state to help towards that, plus the other money that we've gotten, and if we don't do it, we're going to lose that money, it's going back, and we're going to have to do it in three years all on our own without getting that money. So it's important, but I think the people need to understand and know exactly what it's going to cost each individual person. All I hear are complaints about the water bills now and complaints about the taxes now. We need to make sure they're aware of it, they know about it, and we get some input from the people on it before we vote on this.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more, and I think, you know, we struggled in my office, and we tried to capture that in the report on, you know, could we shrink this project? And everywhere we tried to shrink it, wasn't, wasn't fair to somebody. Certainly, in doing an infrastructure project just in the, in the center proper, without doing side streets or residential, is certainly not palpable. Certainly, it was told to the public, through me at least, and through this council, I believe, that this was an infrastructure project. To cut the residents out of an infrastructure project, to me, would be absurd. Cut the businesses out of the infrastructure project would not be feasible as well on the other side. So where, if you do shrink the project, the only way you can shrink it is through the beautification efforts, the only thing the people can appreciate and see out of this project. So we did struggle. It can be done, I'm told by the director, that just, in my opinion, the project should be maintained as whole as long as we can. And again, you're correct that, you know, if we don't do this project, we're looking at a 10 to 15% increase in labor costs if we wait another year. We're losing the 2.38 million, we will lose some of our complete street money that has been allocated down there as well, and the Chapter 90 can be reallocated to another street or area. So we definitely will lose a significant amount of money, and the more concerning thing is that if we fail on this, we lose our clout and weight to ask for other assistance in other areas of town from our state representatives. So that's very concerning to me as well.
Any other comments from the councils?
I have a question. It seems like a lot of these projects are done, like you just said, for the, for developers to come in to increase the economic base of the town. But it doesn't seem that there's developers knocking on the door yet, and if there is, then is there any way that we could have linkage with them, some sort of assessment with them, because it seems like we do the projects and they get the benefits? So is there any way to hold developers responsible if they want to develop in town? And they're not developing to lose money, they're developing to make money, I would assume. Is there any way that we can have some sort of assessment placed on them for part of the project?
You know, assessment, probably not. Mitigation, there could be mitigation requested from them, but how long do we wait for them? Right now, they're waiting for us to see what we're doing, to see if they're going to resell their vacant, abandoned buildings currently, or are they going to, are they going to move on a project? Some of the, you know, some of the conversations I've had with some of the people doing these developments is they're so close to the line now, if there's any height restriction or any type of movement in that direction, they're not going to be able to afford to do the project themselves. If you're looking at bigger projects, like you see over suck downs, you see maybe a potential middle school, those are the mitigation projects we can have discussions on because there's a lot more units, so there's a lot more profit gained in those, in those areas. So you always look at mitigation, certainly the Diverable School had some mitigation attached to it, to a drainage and sewer and water. Is that correct, Steve? Going from Chamberlain over to the school, some rare access mitigation as well, and also the parking lot was a mitigation throughout, through that process. So we have used mitigation in the past, but those are on the larger projects. These smaller projects, it's certainly hard to mitigate.
And just one follow-up, if we could ask the DPW director that, you know, we're talking about this project, can you tell us, can you give us an overview of the scope of how many miles of piping we have in the town, and how much has been addressed over the last several years, and what else we potentially have?
There's 46 miles of water made, and the town has 35 miles of sewer made. Eleven years that I've been doing this and been pretty aggressive with the projects, we probably replace between seven and eight, eight miles of water made. So there's a lot of water.
And just so everyone is well aware, too, as I've tried to bring out in the forefront here, this is all about borrowing from MWRA with no reserves. That means an emergency or anything else would have to come to our capital reserve account, or borrowing on the MWRAs on the water and sewer side to increase that rate. But that's not our only issues. We have, we have a lot of other capital issues out there, some which are a bit. We have, we have a lot of other capital issues out there, some which I'll be bringing up tonight under my management report for the next council meeting. And certainly, you should be aware of that. You know, we have a school playground issue, we have a fire truck issue, we still have DPW. They only needed to deposit one truck out of the six that had been taken away from him. So, we have a lot of capital needs, and we haven't been addressing them. And we have, we have to find a way to address some of these capital needs on an emergency basis as well as a ongoing built-in to the budget process as well. Any other comments from council, please? Jack?
I'm not sure who to address this question to, maybe the manager. Jack Dow Precinct Three. Is there any money left over from the school building project to be used, that could be used to, for the demolition of the middle school site?
The, there is a projected amount that hasn't been certified by the MSBA yet of one-point-six billion dollars. That would have to go to another capital project and reallocated toward, through the council to another capital project. Where we don't, we would not own that. I think the will of the council, I think at the end of the day, is to sell that and develop it through a private vendor, not through the government itself, that we would not be able to use that money. So, actually, in this report, we do have reallocation of potential funding that's left over from the school bond into the center business project. I'm sorry, chief, what was that number? It's projected at one-point-six million dollars. But again, that number is not certified by the auditors, and the CFO believes it's going to be much lower than that. So, we're going on what the OPM has told us, but again, we don't want to put anything in stone.
Terry, as a follow-up, has there been a price established to demolish, excuse me, the middle school gymnasium and auditorium?
I think there was a price that's certainly on our website, Jack, under Plans and Projects, as part of the middle school reuse.
So, if people can use that estimate that's on your?
That was, that was an estimate that was in the paperwork when we put that, all that information out.
Do you remember what it was?
I don't want to guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further comments? Yes, Karen?
My question was going to be on the management of the SBA. I just wanted to know if the bond council has been consulted on that? Because I know that there was an issue using bond money for something else for the school. We wanted to buy the pickup truck, and bond council said, "You can't." So, I want to be sure that bond council has consulted on that.
Michael?
So, they definitely would be when we get to that place. And one of the additional wrinkles in it is that it is a debt exclusion. So, if we use it for a non-debt exclusion project, that is permissible, but then it comes out, we have to pay for it on the general fund side. So, if this project goes forward and if it is a debt exclusion, and if the, there are surplus bond proceeds, then they should be able to be used for this because the, the issue with the truck is that the useful life of the truck is far lower than the term of the loan. So, that's non-permissible. This project has a thirty-year life, so.
Yes. I would want to know that the bond council said, I understand what Michael's saying, but I still would want to be sure that bond council said that you can use this, whether it's a million or one-point-six.
Tonight is just the beginning of this discussion.
I understand, but it is listed.
Right, and if we plan on, I'm going to recommend to the council, we've had, you know, informal discussions about having a full-blown public meeting so that people can, you know, see exactly what the numbers are, what the benefits are, the cost benefits and so forth, before we make any recommendation from the council.
And we, just for information, there is still a deficit on this school waiting for this money to come in. So, there is a deficit in debt present, it's not much of what we're looking for.
Two-fifty, yeah.
Oh, two-fifty.
Any further comments or questions? Yes, sir?
I was wondering if there was any progress on the school zone, twenty miles an hour for the new school?
You can, you can ask a question at the regular public comment. We're actually in a public hearing section right now about the funding for the center project. Okay? Any further comments? With that, I will close out this portion of the hearing. The next item on the agenda is the second public hearing, the town council to vote to accept and authorize a recommended ordinance change referred to from TSAC. And I'll open that with a comment from Counselor Boncori.
Okay. TSAC brought the ordinance change to the council last meeting. It was sent to the Rules and Ordinances Committee. The Rules and Ordinances Committee met last night on it and have voted to approve it under new business we'll be making, a recommendation to accept those ordinance. But for the public hearing, the ordinances, the TSAC wants to change ordinance number ten thirty-two zero one zero thirty-two. And the subject is expired registration tickets. Right now, the ordinance says no valid or expired registration plate or registration sticker. These are on fines. The recommended change is to change those words to no valid or expired registration plate or registration sticker over thirty days out on a valid registration plate. So, it gives more stimulus to the police that are observing something that is gone. It gives the person an extra thirty days to renew their plates before they get fined or ticketed for it. The other change is in the very next section, ten thirty-two zero one zero, number fourteen, and that's in, on parking overtime. Right now, the current ordinance lists A, posted fifteen minutes over posted limit, B, posted thirty minutes over posted limit, and C, posted one hour over posted limit. That's how the ordinance reads now. They want to clarify it and change it to parking over the posted time limit on any street or portion thereof is considered a ticketable event. But considered ticketable event is not in the wording.
Any comments, questions? I think that just cleans up the ticket, ticketing, because the ticket book has it listed. So, the tickets get longer and longer, and we have not much room. So, that's a consolidation effort on the ticketing side. So, it gives more room, because we've added fines and we've added violations to that book, so.
So, we are living in, because we're, we're adding two sentences on the top one, and we're taking away three sentences on the bottom one. So, we're saving a sentence.
Well, in the ordinance, by the ticket book, it lists fifteen minutes over, an hour, thirty minutes over. But get rid of those three lines on the ticket book. You still have one? I do. Any further comments, questions by the council? Hearing that, I'll close out that portion of the hearing. Public comment?
I was wondering if there was any progress on the, the new school, twenty miles an hour school zone.
We sent, we sent that to TSAC, that's the Public Safety Group, and they're taking a look at it. Thank you. Any other public comment? Really? You sure? Correspondents, we did have one correspondence. We received a letter from the gentleman on Pleasant, the other Pleasant Street or Pleasant Court relative to parking, illegal parking, parking blocking driveways. We refer, we refer that to TSAC as well. Committee reports.
Councilor President?
Finance, yes.
I did receive a piece of correspondence I just wanted to report.
Please.
So, it was something that I actually wanted to bring up to Terry. There was a lot of discussion online and some emails that I received about our last snow emergency regarding like a late night, two o'clock in the morning sirens and, and lights for people. People were being woken up late at night in exchange for basically the people who were violating the, the snow, the parking ban so that they could be announced that they needed to move their cars. So, the question most people asked was basically, why aren't they simply just being ticketed and towed? Why does the rest of the neighborhood have to be awoken for the few who actually didn't follow the rules? So, I just, I wanted to bring it up that.
Thank you, I'll talk to the deputy chief on the protocol and procedure on that. But, you know, just be advised, see, if we just tow and tag them, we got a lot more phone calls about just towing and tagging them. So, we try to be as courteous as we can and without hating the people as little as possible during those snow emergencies. But certainly, I can understand two o'clock in the morning, and I'll discuss it with the deputy chief. Thank you. Let's go, finance committee.
One second. Finance committee met this evening in the town council chambers. There were two items on the agenda. One was the council clerk's position, which we tabled till the next meeting. We felt that we didn't have adequate information yet, and we feel that there'll be preliminary reports regarding next year's budget for the Finance Commission on the twenty-sixth, I think, meeting, or the twenty-eighth. And we think we'll have more information to go forward with, so we tabled that till the next meeting. The other item on the agenda was what we had just discussed, the four-point-nine-three-one-five-hundred-thousand dollars for the center. The present at the meeting were, from the committee, myself, and Counselor LaCorte. Also present were President Vecchia, Counselor England, Counselor Lacerdo, Counselor Calla, Counselor Boncori, town manager, the CFO, Dick Kingston, and the DPW Director. There was obviously, and our assistant town manager, Joe T. There was much discussion on this. We felt at this time, we as a committee did not have enough information to make any kind of recommendation. We also felt very strongly that this needs a town forum. So, the residents, both commercial and residential, or anyone really, because everybody is a part of it, that they should have and need to have more public input from them. We did not think that this was something that we could even make a recommendation on at the following finance committee. So, we moved this forward to the full council without recommendation, hoping that the council would see it appropriate to have a public forum on this for the residents to be heard. And that was it.
Economic development?
So, we had two meetings, actually, since the council last met. We met, I think, last Thursday, and we met on yesterday morning. So, the first economic development meeting that we had, we just kind of chatted out a course that we wanted to take for the year. I don't have the complete list, I took the wrong notebook. But three of the things that we talked about was parking in the Center Business District, design standards down in the center, and also waterfront improvement, are things that we wanted to work on as a committee over the next year or so as long-term plans. And then yesterday, we took on the, we took on the middle school planning board recommendation. We had the full committee there, as well as Counselors Calla and LaCorte. And we voted to reject the planning board's recommendation. I don't think because we disagreed with the thrust of what the planning board's recommendation was, but that we just didn't feel that there was enough detail in their recommendation that we could add to the zone for whatever purpose it is that we wanted, whatever we decided to be. We think that it's important, I think, and I don't want to speak on behalf of all the members, but I think it's important that we make a determination about what the, what we're going to do with that parcel of land and then zone it so that we can adequately protect the neighborhoods that are above it and the people around it. So, that was why we came to the decision that we did. And it was a good meeting, well-attended by many members of the, of the community as well.
Comments, questions? When's the ordinance, I think?
The Rules and Ordinances Committee met last night at six P.M. here in the hobby room. Present were myself, Counselor LaCorte, and Counselor Peter Christopher. There was one item on the agenda, and that was the recommendation from TSAC, which we had the public hearing on a few minutes ago. There was a motion by Counselor LaCorte, it was seconded and passed unanimously to approve that and put before the council tonight under new business. Meeting was adjourned.
Neighborhood meeting, PD, CAC. Did you have a meeting at Precinct Five, or addition, no? Public health and safety. Counselor Calla?
Yes, okay. So, on Thursday, February fifteenth, we had a meeting. At six-thirty, it began here in the hobby room. And the agenda was the progress on the RFQ for the public safety building study and an update from the public health nurse, Deanna Ferretta. Committee members in attendance were Peter Christopher and myself, Nick LaCorte was absent, Chief Flanagan, Deanna Ferretta, Council Vice President Phil Boncori, and former counselor and MRC coordinator Jean Maggio were present. Regarding the RFQ, Fire Chief Paul Flanagan informed the committee on the progress of the RFQ, which stands for Request for Qualifications. Five local architectural firms responded to the RFQ. And at the meeting on the fifteenth, the list had been narrowed down to three. When the most qualified bidder is selected, that firm will schedule a presentation to the council. We will be able to see where we go from here, how much space is needed going forward, what is feasible to do and not to do. So far, Chief Flanagan said no money has been attached to this process. However, I believe there is currently twenty-five thousand dollars earmarked for that study from the council. The council will hear back from the chief in approximately six weeks with information regarding a suitable site for a new fire station. As stated by Chief Flanagan, our fire department cannot currently meet new regulations. The buildings are insufficient and unrepairable. They have heat and CO issues and some mold in the basement. The department currently keeps their equipment stored outside for lack of space, as well as not being able to accommodate other fire department apparatus from out of the elements. The department is also using a used generator during storms. When the Center Business District Development, with the Center Business District Development in discussion and possibly forty-hour residential development at the middle school site, the fire department cannot function under these circumstances or operate in safe service all of the new residents that may in the near future be moving into, into town. There were some other issues that were discussed about the fire engine that went, was in underwater during the storm and the cost to repair that. And also, the ladder truck, the center rails need to be repaired, which, that might come up in tonight's meeting. And the last thing that Chief mentioned was there'll be a meeting in March regarding the evaluation and evacuation plans for Winthrop and other local communities to be discussed by Homeland Security. And we'll hear more about that going forward. This is approximately a three-hundred-thousand-dollar plan on how to move people and where do they go. It's an important talk that's come up in the past and does need to be addressed. The chief will keep us informed of that progress. From the public health nurse, Deanna Ferretta has just moved into her new location at the E.B. Newton School. So, the public health department is no longer in town hall. She stated the new office is great with very nice, functionable space and is located on the first floor. E.B. Newton also has an elevator for handicap accessibility, and she's operating with town hall hours closed on Friday. Deanna has been attending tobacco and vaccine conference training with regards to updated protocol. She informed us that Winthrop has used up all of our flu vaccines to date. However, the city of Chelsea has offered to share vaccines with us should we need it, and the CDC has a list of providers as well. She has documented twenty-nine flu cases, more than double reported from last year. And those are just the ones that were reported. She feels there are more cases out there that are not reported. Other data she shared reported an increase in tuberculosis and chronic Hep C cases in Winthrop. DPH reported eighteen deaths by overdose in two thousand seventeen in Winthrop. Over two thousand people die annually in Massachusetts due to the opioid overdoses. Next, the transition from inspectional services is working out nicely. And although the departments are separate, Deanna and Al Agui still work on some cases together. In addition, she works closely with Sergeant Sacco, sorry, I never say his last name.
Turgarian.
Turgarian, from the police department. Recovery coaches, school nurse Meredith Hurley, part-time social worker Deb, and Jean Maggio from the MRC and CASA. Recovery coach program is progressing under the new employee policies and guidelines. There is also on Thursday nights from five to eight P.M. a private drop-in space at the E.B. Newton School for those seeking guidance and services from the recovery coaches. She informed the committee that other cities and towns are now beginning to fall of suit and are hiring recovery coaches. So, that should be a feather in our cap as we started that whole process going forward. In addition to working on a database. In addition to working on a database and reimbursable services, she is constantly searching out grants wherever possible to increase and improve services of her department. And for those of you who know Deanna, she is professional and well-informed in her position and quite detailed-oriented. She provided those of us at the meeting with a lot of valuable information, which will be attached to these minutes given to the council clerk and will be available online for public access. Some events she mentioned that we should watch for, March 8th, the Winthrop High School, Middle School, Winthrop High School, will be conducting a seminar on vaping and e-cigarettes. If anyone's interested, I believe it's being sponsored by CASA, and it's from 6:00 to 7:30, March 8th, at the Winthrop High School. Also in March, the MRC will host CPR and first aid training, if anyone is interested in that. Contact Jean Maggio. There are blood pressure clinics at the senior center, provided by MRC nurse volunteers. I think that's on a weekly basis, more than 100%.
Chiefs of Justice, the MRC, weekly down the senior center?
Yes, I'm pretty sure it's Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday. On April 9th is Wellness Week, and the school nurse, Meredith Hurley, there will be events at the middle high school during that week, along with a resource fair. And lastly, hoping to move the public health department forward, Deanna has already submitted her budget for next year, and there were a few requests to maybe include funding for the MRC coordinator. And I think that's it. Respectfully submitted, and the meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM.
Thank you, Consul Cala.
Town manager. Good evening. We have been asked to sign on to the Massachusetts opioid litigation through all the public man page attorneys. There is a nationwide collection of lawyers that are pursuing the opioid litigation model to try to get us reimbursement for our expenses and harms that the pharmaceuticals have caused to each community. The Attorney General has, is still analyzing what the Massachusetts response is, but again, the Attorney General goes after a state pool of money and not a local pool of money, so that's litigation we'll keep an eye on, and it's no cost to the town. It's only a cost if they're successful. It's 25% contingency on the award, not a 33%. All the costs and expenses do come from the attorneys themselves and not from the town. So, we're certainly eager and anxious to see how we're doing that. CBD and financing report, I think we, we delivered what was needed, and hopefully we'll have continued conversation on that. Again, the police seizure for that drug raid in Revere and Winthrop is over a million dollars right now, so certainly my hats off goes to Deputy Chief Goodwin and his staff for putting that together with Revere, and, you know, certainly took a long-term player out of operation here locally. The robberies on Shirley Street, there've been some questions as it pertains to those robberies. I thought it was worthwhile to come and bring it to your attention and have a potential community meeting with Precinct 6 and 3 together, since they're almost overlapping in their jurisdictions. It's the Seafoam Ave area and Shirley Street area there. One of the robberies have been completely solved, and was a painter hired by a homeowner in that area, and that was back in November. There was an elderly gentleman that was robbed, and certainly, we actually used the MBTA bus cameras to track that person down, so it was very good to have those cameras on board at that particular moment in time. There is a, another armed robbery at the convenience store there. Those are two gentlemen that Deputy Chief Goodwin is following with the task force, hopefully to identify them, and we believe there'll be progress on that case. Winthrop is only one of the areas affected by those two armed robbers. They're up in PBD, Lowland Lynn, Revere, Chelsea, just about everywhere on the North Shore. You can imagine these people have hit a convenience store. It seems to be isolated convenience stores that they go after. It's darker, darker areas of the community with not much traffic, so Deputy Chief is working on that as we speak. And there was a street robbery of a person holding a plastic firearm, that the person was, thought it was a real firearm. The suspect dropped the firearm. At that point, he figured out it was plastic and chased the person, but was not able to catch him. So those are, that's a, those are the robberies that we're talking about. I think it's worthwhile to bring back some of our community meetings with law enforcement and the fire department and Al Aggie, and building services with the councilors' cooperation for each precinct, and do a, you know, a snapshot of crime over the last 365 days and what's in their areas. They were very successful. We did it before with the council members for each precinct. So I'm going to ask the Deputy Chief to head that up, and he'll be in touch, or I'll be in touch with you to set some dates that are good, and we'll start with 3 and 6, and then work our way to the other areas of the community. So, the fire truck, ladder truck, we had, do have a motion going to the council tonight for $200,000. The fire truck had rust and rot underneath their, their engine. That was inspected. The company that built the truck was, came out and did a test on it to see if it was able to continue in operation, and determination was not. There was a larger litigation, class action lawsuit on this particular company in doing the, all dealing with rotten, rotten from underneath their engines, but this engine currently is, we're going to need a capital transfer of $200,000 to get this engine back. The good news is that if we spend $200,000, Chief Flanagan has represented that he probably can get another 10 years out of this ladder truck, and if we don't, they're usually $1.2 million. So, that's significant savings if we get it repaired and we can utilize it for 10 more years. Toss the boss on March 3rd. Go to, if you'd like to donate, you can go to Revere Plunge. It's on our Facebook page, and certainly I'm going to participate in that, and Chief Flanagan said if I were to speed-o, he'll give $600, $500. So, we'll see. We'll see on the March 3rd what will happen.
I'll show you there, Sue.
So let all proceeds go to Special Olympics. I was signed up at a meeting I missed, and the Deputy Chief attended, and I got chosen. So that teaches me that I would miss a meeting. Motor vehicle excise taxes will be going out on February 22nd. Social media accounts, I just wanted to brief the council on the social media accounts, myself and Deputy Chief Goodwin. We go to a law enforcement training talking about First Amendment and social media. It is imperative that, we understand that these are public forums unless we have, we put out their terms and conditions that limit the public forum to a limited public forum, and we get usage agreements that people who use it and abuse it, we can actually block or hide their message. And certainly, you know, the Honolulu Police Department has currently, has a federal lawsuit that was placed against them, and they did lose for taking down certain people's posts, and they didn't have a usage, use and terms agreement on their, on their Facebook page. So, we will be going around each department, showing them how to post the usage in terms that they create that's applicable to their department, and also we're in the process of hiring Social Archive, which is an archiving firm for social media posts and Twitter and Facebook, and what they do is capture everything you do on that book, on page, and then if you need to retrieve it, you can retrieve it on that date, or you can retrieve it from that date 10 years forward, and it'll show the changes and who made those changes, and was deleted or hidden. It's, it's very important to understand that social media is also a public record, and we have to protect it and archive it in the proper format. That's been a priority of mine over the last week and a half, so we'll continue with that. Tips Project, there was certainly, I asked Joe to take over on that in a second. I'll just finish my report, and then give it, give it over to Joe. Marshall Street, we did have a, they did have to condemn a house on Marshall Street. The inspectional services, police department, fire department, clinical services were all present to assist in that condemnation of that home. We did work with Barbara Pucci from Capic and our housing authority, so no one would be displaced with our, with our home, but conditions warranted that, that order that Al Aggie issued, and we did have meetings prior to that happening. So, I just want to assure the council that we had all the support services in place while when we do these things, that we try to help the people as much as we can. The sergeant exam for the police department is our first assessment center that we'll be having under their contract. We negotiated assessment centers. This will be the first one for sergeants. It'll be taking place in April, so we're anxious to get that underway and seeing how the new test results come in. And I will be starting trial on March 5th. On behalf of the town, I'll be in trial for three weeks starting March 5th. Hopefully, it's not longer than that. Joe D. will be in the office on a daily basis to assume the duties while I'm tied up. It usually goes from 9 to 1, so I'm guessing 9 to 2 would be inaccurate. I come back in the afternoon and check in with Joe. So just for your favorite questions.
On the Tips Project, so the Tips Project, just so you know, is talking about the rebuilding of Revere Street from McGee's Corner to Crest Avenue, including total reconstruction of the two signalized intersections and possibly some enhancement of the intersection Shirley Street. Steve, feel free to jump in if I get any of this wrong. The project was put forward, was, was reactivated in December with the state, and we, it went before the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the NPO. Last Thursday, I was in attendance with the town's engineer on the project, just to make sure that they knew that we, we worked in favor of it being reactivated, and they scored us kind of mid-low, but we've, we've pushed back a little, asked them to give us a few more points in a couple of different areas to make the project look a little bit more attractive. It's a $3.5 million project, of which we're responsible for doing the engineering. The, if the project stays on the, gets approved and stays on the tip, when it comes our turn to be funded, the state would pay for and do all the construction, but we have to do the engineering. So...
How much is it?
Getting out of brass tacks, we have a proposal from our engineers to take it from where it is now through construction of $343,000, which is about right. It's about 10% of the total construction cost, but we could get to 25% drawings for a cost of about $142,000 right now, and that would take us and work through the end of this fiscal year and allow us to make our next filing with, with the NPO and Mastock. They want to see 25% plans if they get them. It's not a done deal, but we've been indicated to us that, you know, that would be a great step in helping them to approve the project and get it programmed under the tip. The other good thing to know about our project is that because it's only $3.5 million, most of the projects on the tip, just, you know, TIP stands for Transportation Improvement Plan. It's the state's annual five-year plan. So, most of the projects are for much more than $3.5 million, and one of the things that interests the state in this project is that at $3.5 million, if something falls off before our turn in line comes, which happens almost every year, they would be looking for smaller projects to replace it with. So, if we can get this 25% plan in, it's very likely that we'll be put on the back end of the five-year plan. That's 2022, 2023. But if between now and then, we keep moving forward with our, our engineering plans, and something else larger falls off, they could move us up closer to the front of line, and we could get it done before 2022. So...
What is, what is the job until? Do they actually reconstruct the sidewalks, the streets? Has any lighting involved?
That's where I'll ask Steve to help out a little bit, but yeah, it's, it's pretty much a complete street reconstruction of that whole stretch of Revere Street. Steve?
It's all essentially, I mean drainage and infrastructure could also be included. Right now, that's, that's not in the scope of project. I would recommend looking, at least lining some of the water main in that roadway if it is an accepted project. But yes, it's all street ADA compliant pedestrian ramps, curbing, all new curbing. They look to, you know, to do, they want us to look at shared bike lanes and things to that, that nature.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not necessarily that they're going to take away travel lane or anything like that, just to make accommodations for more use of bicyclists and other users. It's, it's not just for cyclists, it's for any other user that wants to use it, mobility impaired people, whatever. You know, better accommodations for bikes, for buses that already use a big stretch of that route, and those were some of the areas we've pushed back. We didn't really grade out well on this plan because what the state had said to us initially was that, well, you don't have a lot of incidents of bike crashes on the street. Well, that's because nobody rides that street on their bicycle because it's so dangerous. So, we're improving the street, we'd see an improvement, it'd be a better, more functional roadway for all users. So, we're pushing back on, on things like that, and we expect them to give us a few more points there. The, the thing to, you know, at this point, what I'm asking, Chief and I are asking for is some direction as to, would you like us to pursue partial funding for the contract to get us through the 25%? You want to shoot the moon, something in between, and then we can have a request before you at the next meeting to...
So, again, this goes from McGee's Corner all the way to Crest Ave?
Yep, and includes both of the currently signaled intersections, and will, and will include some level of improvement to the intersection with Revere Street. I don't know that it would be a complete signalization, although it may be, that that will be studied during the 25% and up review, because kind of what the state's going to look at is traffic counts and how many vehicles use the intersection, and how many interactions there are at the intersection with walkers and bicyclists. Question?
I have a question, yeah.
Consul Cala.
When this first came up, when they started to, you know, look at that project, was there any money that was put aside for that, for engineering costs? For some reason, I thought there was some money that was put aside for that.
There was a much larger project initially, included Winthrop Street and some Herman Street. That project, I guess, was taking, taken off and was paid through some other funds, so that project is basically going to be complete, Steve, and when I accurate on that, in saying that, the upper Winthrop Street project was paid through what funds?
Yeah, that was, that was the project that we decided, the prior town manager decided to, because the tip project was so uncertain, and it was, you know, the length of, of the project was uncertain. He cut the project in half and used town funds to do the section from that Cap Square down to the East Corner. There was no improvements done to the intersection. It was just street and sidewalk improvements. That was able to be done for approximately $500,000, as you see, Winthrop Street was paid, the curb removed and reset, and sidewalks were done, as well as the George Street parking lot. But that was a phase one. Actually, $300,000 did that phase one. $250,000 was supposed to come this fiscal year. It never got funded to do decorative lighting, stamped asphalt on, on the crosswalks at that Cap Square. That stuff was never funded. So, there isn't actually a phase two to what you see on that section of Winthrop Street. That's how that got done. It was strictly through town funds, and the engineering money, it was initially started to do this whole tip project, again, prior administration shows to have that, that engineer and kind of group. It was never submitted the way it was supposed to be submitted under a tip project, 25%, 50%, 75%. So, we kind of put it back to square one for this leg of the George Street car road.
But just to reiterate, this entire project, this $3.5 million project can be done in the town of Winthrop for $343,000. The state picks up the rest of it.
We pay, we're paying just the engineering.
We just pay the engineering cost of 343 to get $3.5 million worth of work done in this town.
If it's approved.
If it's approved, if it's approved.
If it's approved, yeah.
How do you lose that?
But, yeah.
Okay.
Go into those NPO meetings, being there, answering their questions is part of it, and I've been given a complete schedule of when they'll be meeting. They'll be meeting again sometime first week in March. I plan to be there for the couple hours that they need me there in case they ask a question. The more interest we show in it, the more we show that we're doing the engineering, the likelier...
I mean, we do, since we haven't received any tip money, and a lot of the local communities have received it, except for Winthrop, yeah.
Any further comments?
The town manager, we had a meeting about a week back with myself, council president, and Chief Flanagan, and you were not able to attend. I know you wanted to, but couldn't make it with a lot of the people on Morton Street in the back row with the devastation, which was just incredible to see. And I know this is going to be ongoing and everything else, but what I would like to ask you through TSAC is if we can look at the traffic patterns down there, including potentially a stop sign at the end of Wilshire Street, and potential other just traffic patterns that we might be able to look at, because it hasn't gone down there at a, at a pretty good clip. So, I'd ask you to do that for TSAC, through TSAC, if you can, put that on the agenda. And also, for the DPW, just a question, do we know how often, just in general, in the town and down there, the storm drains are cleaned up, or is there a procedure or a schedule for that?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have a regular routine on catch basins. We try to do, we break it down by plow, we try to do at least a plow per season. Just quite a bit of catch basins per plow. By permit, we, we need to, you know, we need to stay active, and we need to show our monitoring and our, and our maintenance program and the truth of it. So, as far as... So as far as, you know, Morton Street, I have to look at the records to see when that, last time that flower room was accomplished. It typically takes us, you know, you know, to go through the entire town, it's 11 flower rooms, so 11 years.
Thank you, Steve.
One question too.
Counsel Lucero.
Actually, this is for Mr. Calla as well. So you mentioned for this TIPS project, it's all hardscape and you recommend it potentially changing some of the other pipes underground?
Yes.
This one, I'm just curious is what those conditions are like for that road, so that we don't end up in the same situation where we have this nice hardscape that's put down and, you know, five years from now, we need to rip it all up again to replace the pipes. What's the?
Well, we're still at the beginning, the beginning part of this. We need to sit down with CHA and, you know, and discuss some of those costs. Right now, you know, I don't have that information, but as far as the creation of pipes, I can tell you that there's several water mains that go down that leg of Revere Street. There's a 20-inch water main to the town, which is in good condition, that's Dr. Lyon. There's a 24-inch MWRA line on the sidewalk, which is kind of independent of us. There's a 10 and there's a 12. The 10 and the 12 are the two lines that I get concerns with. And, you know, I would look at it a little bit more closely. One of the 10 may be abandoned and, you know, things moves over to 12. Again, that opens up an infrastructure project and, you know.
It's one of those examples where like free money is not necessarily going to be free. So I just wanted to make sure that we were really planning of what the real costs of the project would be if we did.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you. School Department, we thought the school committee met February 12th at 6 o'clock in the musical with Wintor High School, and it was a very short agenda. The most important thing on the agenda, I believe, was the permanent appointment of Lisa Hawley as the superintendent of schools.
Congratulations.
The superintendent did report, a very brief report, after one of the important things she mentioned is the fact that she was coming out with a complete report on the playground at the next meeting, and I think you're going to make a presentation at the next council meeting as well. There were some other activities relative to policies for substance abuse and smoking, which was put off to the next meeting. That was basically it. Under old business, the old middle school site, we've known for how many years that was going to be vacant, and they're still sitting here and it's non-zoned. Comments from my colleagues? We need to do something.
We absolutely need to do something. And we had sent it to the planning board on numerous occasions, asking them to come back with a zoning plan for this district. And we received on February 5th a decision and recommendation of the planning board to put us into a modified central business zoning designation, which perplexes me completely because every zoning bylaw that we have written to date specifies height, density, parking, so on, including the Center Business District when we wrote the Center Business District zone. But we have no idea what they mean by modified central business districts. And nothing came from them in that regard. So I don't think we're still prepared to do it unless you want to send it to one of the committees, I wonder which one, of the council and have the council do the zoning.
I think it's just important for the council to understand that the planning board was at full access to legal counsel. There were opinions forwarded to the planning board from legal counsel, and I think it's imperative, I guess, on all of us to put our blinders on and say, what is in the best interest for the entire community, no matter what goes there? What gives the town the most flexibility to put whatever they want there in the future?
Correct.
And KMP opinion was the CBD zoning recommendation. And certainly, the council still, again, if this goes out to RFP and is going to sell the land, still controls over who they sell to, what that RFP says and what that RFP restricts. And certainly, the planning board has to still give an opinion over what they think about what goes on that site. So, you know, I would urge the council to operate with their blinders on, do what gives us the most flexibility as a community, and certainly I would rely on the KMP decision to do that, to urge you to do that.
Counsel Lucero?
I mean, I've been to enough of the planning board meetings where I think they've been put in a position only to fail because they haven't really been given a direction from the council. As far as, you know, rezone a site, well, they don't really know what we're trying to achieve and there are a lot of different ideas of what could potentially go there. And a lot of that is actually determined of however we zone it, but we can't zone it a certain way until we know what it is that we want to put there. And so, you know, I think we need to have all that information and then give a direction to the planning board in order for them to make a decision because they're just firing in the dark without any input from us, what they're trying to come up with there. So, I mean, I think we're getting a lot of puzzle pieces shortly of potential pieces of what could go there. And I think once we have all those puzzle pieces, we need to actually have a direction because what I see this site from a distance of this process is basically nothing has happened because we continue to walk in a circle. And every new idea that comes up with, we say, well, maybe that'll work or maybe that'll work. And eventually, we just have to actually put it on a path to something. Continually leaving it out for all examples just makes it sit there empty. Eventually, we have to put it on a path or something. So I think once we actually get all the information we're waiting for, we need to send a message to the planning board to zone it whatever direction that we decide to go on as the council. That's just what I think.
Counsel Kell.
I agree with Counsel Lucero. I think that we need to make some policy decisions about how that site is going to be used. And once we have a better, a better decision or, you know, a better plan for what's going to happen at the site, then we can get the right zoning in to best achieve our plan. I think trying to do a one-size-fits-all might not be, might not be the best approach. If we decide what we want to put there, then we can optimize the zoning for that site in a way that makes the most sense for the town. So I think the planning board needs more direction.
Anything else? Just to be heard?
I would just say, if anyone on the planning board is listening, I think that we've seen a lot of trouble with, or issues that have popped up with the Center Business District zoning in the center. And to, I know that there's been talk about merely extending that over. I understand the concerns about spot zoning, but I do think that this is a unique site and in order to stop from making the same, and I don't want to say that they were mistakes because I think that those safeguards were put in there intentionally. But to extend that in that area of the town where it is abutting a residential neighborhood, we may be making the same mistakes. We may be thinking we're doing one thing when we're really doing another. So I think that that's also something to consider. I think that the Center Business District zoning is appropriate for what we have down the center now, but that middle school site is something that we haven't dealt with in a very long time. And it might be, it might be appropriate for us to look at it through a different lens. And I think that that might be, that would be a way to go.
Counsel McCray.
I don't think anyone knows yet what's going on. We're doing different studies. Some people looking for a rink in a community center, other people looking for apartments to be there, some other people looking for public safety buildings to be there. I think we should have some kind of zoning that would cover all of it. And, you know, whether it's the Center Business District or we have another, you know, situation like we've done with all the other schools that went down. There was special overlay zoning district where, you know, the Derricke School was used it and it's been used, and it's been used successfully with our overlay district and with the hospital and so on. Whether the building is outside of its use, is a special overlay district for what someone wants to put there. But first, there has to be someone that wants to put something there. And we haven't got anybody to put anything anywhere yet. And I think, how can we zone it until we have some idea? Which one of the?
Well, and the developers are waiting to see how you're going to zone it before they want to respond to an RFP because they're not going to, you know, we did this once before, we put it out there and no one responded, so that's the problem we have.
It needs to be something that encompasses any way we want to go. And actually, the Center Business District. I don't know what modified means. That's the problem. There's no definition to modify.
Counsel Odom.
Thanks. I, to back up on that point, I, you know, I think if we want to, for example, put housing there, there's certain zoning that's going to make, that's going to be more attractive for developers and going to get the town a better deal in the transaction. And then if we are going to use it for a public safety building or some other purpose, then there are probably other zoning opportunities that maximize or get the best result for us for that use. And so I think we need to come up with a policy decision about how we're going to use that property and then we can maximize the zoning to get the best benefit of the town.
I was going to, sorry. I was just going to say that zoning is a tool to get, to accomplish a goal. And if we don't know what the goal is, you can't, you can't, you can't zone it. And I think, you know, using some of those examples of the SDOD is probably exactly what we don't want to happen because everything we've SDO'd has spent eight, 10, 12 years and back and forth about what could go there. And we can't afford, you know, we've got all these, all these things coming up, all these things we need to pay for, and we need to start creating the revenue to pay for it. Otherwise, we're only going to keep going to the public to raise their taxes or cutting things, those are our only choice, or not doing things. And so we want to proactively engage those communities, find out what is acceptable to them, design standards, density, parking requirements, those important things that people care about. And we need to zone things appropriately to get there. We can't leave it just open-ended all the time in the gray zone. Nothing is going to happen, we know that. It's tried and true with every project that we've tried to do an SDOD with, sits there and lingers until someone says there's going to be a methadone clinic in a neighborhood and then all of a sudden, something happens. Let's not let it get to that point.
Mr. President?
Please.
In reference to what Counsel McCray said, the properties that he referenced, we utilize the existing structures. We utilize the Derricke School, we utilize the hospital, the Shirley Street School. In this case, they're going to demolish the property, there's more flexibility involved in this, there's more attractiveness to a developer if we zoned it in such a way that they could pursue that with, from scratch, from the ground up, as opposed to using the existing structure.
Has the committee that's involved with it right now, have they had any public meetings at all to bring in residents?
Not that I'm aware of. They have public meetings, posted meetings, I'm not sure how much of the neighborhood around that area is engaged in those meetings. I don't attend those meetings myself, so.
I'm going to make a suggestion, and I don't know if this is law or not, but I, maybe we should combine between rules and ordinances and economic development and see if we can come up with some type of a structure or some type of zoning that you can give some guidance, come back to the council and then give some guidance to the planning board. If not, it's just going to float. You want to send it to?
I mean, I think, I think Ron, you're really on to something that's important because we had an EDCAC that did the master plan document and then a new committee was created to look at a specific thing. And now we're asking the planning board that these conversations are happening siloed. No one is on the same page of what's going on, so it's very difficult to move anything in any sort of direction. Everyone is rowing the boat in a different direction.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I think some consolidation there is pretty important.
Jimmy?
Anything we ultimately come up with, if somebody here tonight said we want to do X, we're still going to have to go to the public or we should absolutely go to the public and get their opinion. I think it would go a lot further to have a public forum to ask, you know, to try to get information because why do all the work and have us say we want to, whatever, put a hotel there? And then everybody say we absolutely don't want that. And then we're going to start all over again. So why wouldn't we get input? And I know the EDCAC has done that for two years and has had numerous meetings and, you know, a lot of people have attended, but it still comes back to, I think people are hesitant to say something that they might, I'm sure every person here, including the audience, has an opinion as to what they think would best go there. But it's not a one-person or a nine-person decision, you need the townspeople that kind of be on board with it and I think it's important that we should, again.
I think all of that needs to be directed from the council. I think by putting these two committees together, come up with a game plan, come up with a meeting date, a public meeting date, get some input from the general public and then move forward with some type of an outline of recommendation to the planning board. This is what we'd like to see there. This is the consensus. At least we're, you know, we're keeping it, the council is in control of it instead of having, you know, cut the committees outside the council.
I was just going to say that I really feel like the, a lot of the public process has already taken place. For two years, we met and talked about that. And then we also had to look at what is realistic. Because I still remember one of the best comments that came there was someone in the audience asking for X and Y and Z and they said in the end, and isn't this great that the state's going to pay for all this? No, it's the taxpayer that's going to pay for all this stuff. And when they realized that the site needed to generate any of the money that the, for whatever it is that they wanted, everybody's tune changed. So I agree that there needs to continue to be a public forum, but it needs to be about educating what's possible.
I agree that we have had the input of the community because we had meetings and larger meetings with the state people coming in, we broke up into groups at the senior center. We had meetings, I'm sure that in the meetings that we had, there were well more than 100 to 150 people that came. We wrote, you know, we felt were the most important things the town needed. You know, that report has been here for a couple of years, not just two years, but this was ongoing before the past two years. This has been going on for about six years. But we had the state commit with their planning people and I don't know if you remember meeting at the senior center and filling out all the law, what we did and breaking up into groups and talking about what was needed in town. And the people had their input. And we have that input and we have that data. I think it's more important that we figure out, I think what Mike said is what we can afford and what we can't afford. And we had a group that said they were going to come in and raise the funds to make a community center in Harton Ridge, but I haven't heard back from them. You know, we have a public safety committee coming, but you know, if we're going to build public safety, it's going to cost $30 million. And we're raising the taxes now for five million and raising the water bill and now we're going to raise another 30 million for public safety. I mean, where is this all coming from? And the people, I think, you know, have to know what's in the future, what it's going to cost them and what they will go for. You know, if they're not going to go for certain things, we just can't do them.
What is the charge of the committee that's up there now? What is the charge? They looked at three different alternatives that came out of this other study that was done.
The charge of the committee now is to just look at option five from the, from the master plan. It's not very open-ended at all. It does say, and possibly use other master plan options.
Let's get them in the next meeting, okay? We'll have an open discussion, put it on the agenda. We'll have, put it on the agenda, have people.
And that was by the master plan.
Okay? Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Michael?
I think that the best thing that I've seen in, as we move forward with this process is to have a visual or a sketch or drawing, or some ideas that people can relate to that they can. they can see, what is this going to physically be like? But it has to be, we have to look at the return on investment on this property. This is an opportunity for us to not lay another burden on the town, as you correctly stated. It's to have an opportunity to enhance the revenue, and that in turn will generate the money for some of our other costs that are coming up, like the fire truck and other issues. So, but I think when we talk in generalities, it's hard for the public to get their head around what this is really going to be. And even if it's not the correct drawing or the correct artist's rendition of what it will be, at least it's something to chip away at and for people to have a vision of what we're trying to achieve.
I believe that committee did generate three different alternatives, the original study committee, the one that we went and did all that focus groups and so forth. Didn't they generate three?
There is a plan, there was a plan submitted to us by the Aiello Arrigioni Group. It had diagrams of what it would look like with some apartments down the bottom and the rink up top. That's the only plan I've seen from anyone, but...
The E D C A C, if that's what you were talking about, from that master plan, there were four drawing concepts and an option five, which the committee felt, none of the first four options. The first option was the straw option of do nothing, right? It was just as a cost comparison, of what happens if we just leave it as it is. And then, there were other various pieces of that. And then, the fifth option was including the possibility of moving a residential development to where the rink was, and putting the rink on the opposite side so that any new development was not abutting the neighborhood that was there.
Right.
That was, and that's in line of what the Arrigioni Plan came out with, was that concept of including the rink in the site, because originally, the charge was not to touch that.
Here again, I think it's important, you know, this thing has been going on for a couple of years, and there's two committees, three committees. There's different concepts of what could go there, what doesn't want to go there, what we shouldn't put there. And the public, they have a problem with just keeping up with what's going on in town government, let alone all these different plans that are up there for the site. So, I think it's even more important that we bring them in, let's look what the concepts are, and let's start making people know exactly where we're going with this thing, so we get some input. I mean, it's not that we're gonna, you know, I don't think stalling it. It's been stalled how many years?
Exactly, with a deadline.
I think we need to, you know, move in on this.
I agree.
So, we'll bring them in at the next meeting, okay? Any further discussion? No? Okay. The next item under Old Business is the appropriation that we discussed earlier. Should we postpone this, or is that figure still good?
On, that would...
What's the issues of the council?
I don't think you have a recommendation from finance, there's no action.
Okay, so we'll postpone this?
Yes, but it's not a finance committee anymore, it's a full conference.
Right. So, we'll postpone it, because we have to do the story anyways. Next item under the town council to vote to accept and authorize a recommended ordinance change referred to from T S A C. Counselor Corry.
I make a motion coming out of committee that we amend ordinance number 1032.01032 by removing the words "No valid or expired registration plate or registration sticker", and replacing them with the words "No valid or expired registration plate or registration sticker over 30 days out on a valid registration plate." That's one, we'll do them separately?
Do them separate.
That's motion out of committee.
Does it need a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
The ordinance committee recommends changing ordinance number 10.32.01014 by removing the words "A, posted 15 minutes over posted limit; B, posted 30 minutes over posted limit; C, posted 1 hour over posted limit," and replacing those words the following words:[897.82][897.82]"Park over the posted time limit on any street proportion thereof."
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next item under Old Business is the Council of Clerk funding. It's still in committee, so we postpone that till the next meeting. Hopefully, we can get that resolved. This, under Old Business, is really old. Town manager recommendation. It's been six months, just a little history about town manager and how the town manager gets appointed under the town charter. It's, it really comes from the town council president, makes a recommendation to the full council. And five of these councils have to agree with the person that I bring forward. But as you know, about six months ago, the old council, which there's still some members here, put forward a process where we would have a outside firm come in and do a search. And that's been going on since September or October, am I correct? Something like that. And we've had a search committee, several of the members are here this evening, that did a tremendous job. The first go-around, I think we had 11 candidates. We boiled it down to four candidates, and then two of them withdrew, and we interviewed, I think, two. And it wasn't to my liking, and it wasn't to the liking of Russ Sanford, who was the town council president at the time. So, we went back out again. During this whole process, incidentally, there's certain people that work in town government, and I had asked if they were interested in the job. And I know many people got up at meetings and, you know, "Why don't you do X, or why don't you just appoint this person?" But it wasn't until very recently, in fact, when we, the next go-around, we had 17 applications that that individual indicated that they were interested in the job. So, I attended the last search committee meeting, which was February 7th. And at that time, it was brought up that the individual was interested in the position, and a vote was taken unanimously, which I concur with, to recommend the appointment of the current interim town manager, Terry Delahanty, to the permanent position subject to successful negotiations. That is my recommendation to the town council.
I make a motion to accept the council president's appointment of Terrence Delahanty as the town manager.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Rule call vote, please.
Counselor Engman?
Yes.
Counselor Cala?
Yes.
Counselor Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Soddo?
Yes.
Counselor McDuffie?
Yes.
Counselor Keating?
Yes.
As President Corry?
Absolutely.
President Vekia?
Yes.
I have asked three of the counselors to join me in the negotiating. And they are Counselor Lindical of Precinct 6, Michael McDuffie, Precinct 1, and Heather Engman of Precinct 4. I will be ex officio, a non-voting member. So, I've asked those three counselors to join me in the negotiation. Thank you. Okay, New Business. Town council transfers $200,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund General Fund to install new frames under ladder one. I'll entertain a motion to refer that to finance.
Motion to refer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Town council appropriate $93,000 from unused balance to the new general fund for repairs to the DPW underground fuel tanks. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion very fair.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Town council received, or the town has received a gift in the amount of $100,000. And I'm going to ask the council to accept, I'll read the text of the motion. "I moved at the town council vote to accept the sum of $100,000, a gift to the Winthrop Public Library from James Athens on behalf of himself and his wife, of which he requests the library to make their own determinations as to which programs and services will be purchased, but that the principal not be spent, only the interest earned on an annual basis, or allow interest to accumulate in order to fund a larger project, or take any action relatives thereto."
Motion been made by Council President Vekia to accept this motion and accept $100,000 gift to the Winthrop Library. Is it second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Crystal Lacerd, you had mentioned something earlier.
I have just two things. As I mentioned earlier, I'd like to, in light of this big funding gap, I would like to request that the council president request the presence of Mr. McKenna when we have a public meeting about this gap, so that the public has a chance to ask questions. I just think that that's only right, and it's unfair of Terry to have to answer for things that were left in his plate.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can discuss it, I'm sorry. Any discussions?
I turned all lights from him. I mean, I...
I think if we are even uttering the words "debt exclusion" and raising somebody's bills because of a project that has a miraculous $4 million gap, that the person who did not articulate that at the beginning should have to answer those questions. I don't think it's fair for people who've been sitting here for two months or less, at least to be present. Maybe not to field questions, but at least to be present.
Any further discussion? I'm sorry.
I'm just concerned that if you're summoning someone in to question whether it should be done in executive session with a notice and, you know, have them have a right to come with an attorney, because the council really, I suppose we have a right to summon anyone in, but depending on what you're looking for from them. I mean, if we're gonna say, hey, this is your fault, and you blame them or something.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to pin anything to anybody. I just feel that, that this is a certain situation where the person originally put this in front of people should have to answer to the public. That's...
Isn't he a consultant to the...
We are still paying his salary, so I haven't seen him since...
So, what's his obligation under the contract?
That agreement states that he answers to the council president directly, and he gets his assignments from the council president. He work on projects as assigned directly from the council president.
So, is he working for us or only for the council president?
He's an advisor to the council, but he answers to and gets his direction from the president.
Would it be out of order if I asked him to come to a meeting based on what his contractual obligations are?
I think that's within your purview. I can check with label of council in the morning, but who drafted the agreement? Get his understanding, but I don't think you need a vote with the council. I think you can do it under your own volition.
Can I just ask what kind of projects he's working on, or has been asked to work on?
I haven't asked him to work on anything. Russ Sanford, the former president, certainly had him in a couple of times with me in my office. Projects currently he's working on, I'm not sure.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I share Counselor Lacerd's frustration with the situation. I think, you know, when we started talking about the CBD infrastructure project, the initial figures were in the $4 million range, and that's what we had included in the Mass Works grant application. And then, it was eight, and now it's one. And it's terribly frustrating that this happened. You know, we need to just figure out the best path forward at this point, but it is terribly frustrating.
I just, I just find it difficult when a lot of people who have gone and done their due diligence to clean up a mess that was left behind, and a lot of people who ran for this office promising that we would focus on generating revenue and not going back to the taxpayer to pay for things, and within the first two months that we're here, you know, we're already talking about debt exclusions. I just don't think that that is fair. And if we're still paying someone's salary, that they should at least be participating in the process like the rest of us.
Any further comments? Someone vote again, because I shouldn't have taken that vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Just ask them, do they need to summon stuff?
Just to ask.
I will ask.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm also, I'm gonna introduce a motion tonight, and I ask that it get sent to T S A C. But the general idea of it, I'm gonna mail it around, I've shared it with Counselor Corry. General idea of it is, is that we have an issue in town with resident business owners who are not able to park their cars in their driveways in the neighborhood currently due to the current ordinances that are in place. I'm not suggesting that we change that ordinance through my motion, but what I would like to see happen is for people who are residents and business owners and can provide documentation that would prove such, that own a business in town, I wanted to see if it was something that we could do to give them a spot in a municipal lot where they would be able to leave their cars or their trucks, commercial trucks, while they were overnight, whereas right now. So, if there was a truck that was non-conforming, that was a commercial vehicle, that they would be able to use a municipal spot in order to do so. As I drafted it, there's a limit to five that would be on, that would be allowable right now. I'm open to any changes that people may have to the rules, and I can go through the committee process. But I just think that if, you know, all these costs get passed on to Winthrop consumers, and I think that it would be something that we could do for businesses to stay in Winthrop, and also for residents who are trying to keep their businesses in Winthrop and do that. So, I just ask that it get sent to T S A C and that we move forward that way.
I'll second Counselor Crystal's motion to send his proposed motion to T S A C to look at back to the council.
So, it's, it's commercial vehicles?
Yes.
Whether it's a car with a commercial plate or a truck with a commercial plate?
Yeah.
It just doesn't have a driveway?
And they don't have a driveway?
So, it will, as the, as the ordinance is right now, even if they have a driveway, they actually... aren't allowed to pack it in the driveway. So if it's a non-conforming.
Over a certain tonnage.
Over a certain tonnage.
Over a certain tonnage. So the ice cream trucks was the target of having ice cream trucks and that type of vehicle in someone's residential driveways.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. To TSAC.
Council President, have any more?
Yes.
Under New Business, I'd also like to make a motion that we put discussion on the ferry for the next meeting.
That will be.
It's been brought up a number of times and asked for, and so I would like to make a motion.
I would have added it on this agenda, but given what we were discussing, I felt that we should go and the next week, run this up to two hours as it is. So I'll have it on the next agenda for you.
The person who was dealing with the ferry, who's on vacation this week too, I felt it was important to have her here.
Do you want a motion? Do you want to vote on that or do you take my word for it?
I'll take your word for it.
Thank you. Public comment? Mr. Dow.
Thank you. I'm Jim Dow, Precinct Three. I attended the economic development meeting on Monday. It was a full board, the F P people, and there were six to seven people in the audience. I introduced a map of Eagle Side Park. Eagle Side Park was donated by, I'm not gonna read this because I read it at the subcommittee meeting, I'll be brief. Eagle Side Park was donated by a poor woman in 1907. It included ten acres. And then it mentions that included with the ten acres was three acres of land all on Pauline Street to be included in Eagle Side Park to make it thirteen acres of that Eagle Side Park as the footage. It mentions 343 feet of Pleasant Street, 1700 feet of Pleasant Street, Lincoln Street, Pauline Street, et cetera. This name was dedicated as a park to be used as public parkland. I hear a lot of mention of residences, I hear mention of public buildings, and I know that they're much needed. But there's a process and everybody's looking for a policy to go by to use public parkland. And the policy is the Energy and Environmental Affairs, Article 97, land disposition policy. It tells you what you can and cannot use public landfill. I know schools have been built on it and archivings, et cetera. But whatever is not, Chris and mortar, is parkland. I heard at planning board that somebody wants the land to revert back to residential A and B. It was discussed. Well, it was never residential A and B. It was a park. Most other cities and towns use this policy to figure out how to deal with public land. It's an open process. It has to go through votes by the box commissioners, the town council, the conservation committee, and then the House of Representatives in the Senate in order to change the land use. I'd like this town council to make themselves aware of this policy, read it, and I'd like this policy to be used for the disposition of this land. If you go by this, then I don't think there'll be any confusion. You can change use. Like you said, in a public forum, everybody knows what you're gonna change it to. I've never seen any public land used as residential. I researched eye and look, this is the first I've heard of it in this town. If you look at land disposition policy in other cities and towns, you'll find that this policy is used extensively. First thing they say when you want to change the use of public land is it could possibly be a dispute because of Article 97 land disposition policy. So I hope this council takes this into consideration, follow this rule about the property that is public parkland, should be used as public parkland. And I think it would eliminate a lot of confusion. Open meeting about this policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Anyone else?
With respect to everything the council addressed tonight, I would urge a lot of the new councilors as well, to become familiar with our public safety facilities that we have, just so you have a scope of what we're dealing with. Just so you know what's going on with the RFQ, we reached out to the three that were chosen to make a presentation. It'll be a week from Friday in the manager's office prior to him going into his lawsuit. And then we're hoping to push them to have something back.
I'd like to call it litigation.
Whatever. So with that all being said, we're urging the council, I know the process has to continue, to at least wait till our reassessability comes back. Because one way or the other, and you know, some of the problems that we're having, outer town apparatus kind of fit in our station and they're falling down, and I invite you as all to give me a buzz, I'll take you through. It's beyond urgent at this point. Our buildings are coming apart at the seams. I'm not saying that's the spot. All you need to ensure me you agree 100% that we desperately need to do a building. But we're probably about five or six weeks out from having our architects, not plans, feasibility, what's needed by the town. It's been almost seven years since we first started talking about it, so I'm just looking for a few weeks and, you know, they can put it somewhere else. That's great.
Thank you. Excuse me, chief. Are you, are you taking these, these proposals without a physical location? Is this just saying, we're gonna build a building, it'll be X amount of square feet?
Well, they, when they first came for the orientation, if you will, they came through all of our buildings and they basically, the way that they retrofitted our buildings in the late 60s to handle heavier apparatus, they put big sunnysuits in the basement. A lot of the older stations that they rehab and they use basement areas, our stations aren't feasible. Right now, I did have the problem with the truck going underwater in the floods. I'm using a 32-year-old engine and there's a lot of departments that run the engine. I get guys riding outside in the trucks, which creates huge liability for the community. But all the trucks I could borrow from other communities to get us through this period don't fit in our station. So the problem just hasn't stopped. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna take a 40-man police department, a body person, fire department, see what the space, you know, we're governed by FPA standards, the police have standards, you know, whether it's the caring of their cells and everything, what we need. There is no community space left. A lot of the development you folks are doing is the center. We have not plans, but we have people coming in looking to generate 22 units on Shirley Street, 15 units on Shirley Street, eight units. There's plenty of growth going on, but we have to look at the whole thing. We are still left in these public safety buildings and, you know, councilors, we heard it down on Morgue Street, response, response, and we just can't do it out of the facility we're in. So I'm not arguing your point, I just need you to come visit and see for yourself what we have for our infrastructure.
So the deliverable, I think to answer your question, they're gonna give us square footage what we need?
Right.
And then look at potential sites in Winthrop.
So they're gonna set up, say, we need a building that can provide, meet these needs based on a certain size and then try to fit that in with a shoe on some.
Fire stations standing separate and a police station.
Right, is that another option? Are they providing that as an option?
Yes, yes. There is savings together, by together.
Right.
The town's almost.
It may not, yeah, it may not work. But thank you.
Any further public comment? Hearing none? Public relations? You, Councilor Calla mentioned the vaping and e-cigarette community forum March 8th at the Winthrop Little High School at 6:00 to 7:30 PM. We still have committee openings. I urge you to go on the town website, please send in an application, get involved in the town. And on a personal note, I started doing community forum again. It's the first community forum I did since the election. And I will be doing a community forum every week. There is a council meeting with the town manager and we will be discussing items that we had on the agenda and some of the items that are, you know, of interest to people in the community. We're trying to get more people involved and see what's going on in town, so it's, if you don't have cable, which some of the people don't have it, but it'll be on YouTube thanks to WCAT. Thank you, Michael. So with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So vote. All in favor?
Aye.